Hello. Good evening, good evening everyone. Welcome to Hopkins Elementary School. We are so excited to host you here and excited that you are here this evening for our Growth and Planning Committee meeting. We have a couple of Hopkins staff here, Ms. Hernandez, our music teacher right back there. Thank you so much for being gracious, hostess, and letting us hang out in your cafeteria this evening. I'd like to start tonight's meeting off with a few words from our superintendent, Dr. Ball.
Thank y'all, I'm super excited. So many people are here because school is out. So I thought people might not come, so thank y'all. And I see a few familiar faces and then some new ones. If this is your first Growth and Planning meeting, will you just raise your hand? Okay, we got a few Growth and Planning members that are new. So don't only come to this one, continue to come with us. This is the last one for the year. So it might seem a little bit different, but this is the last one for this year. And then we're gonna pick it right back up like if we never left for school. So just wanna thank you. I'm assuming that most everybody's interested, if this is the first time you're joining us, might have something to do with security and safety. And we will be talking about that. But just a reminder that this is, we've been going through a series of Growth and Planning meetings. And before I forget, I wanna apologize for my attire. Today, we had one of our major fundraisers for our foundation. The Judson Education Foundation has a golf tournament, which we raise about $60,000 that goes right back to our kids. We give scholarships for our teachers to do creative, innovative things in the classroom. And then scholarships for our students to go to college at each one of our high schools. So we played in, I didn't play, I worked the tournament, so did Dr. Taganoff. So we had to come like this. So I apologize for our appearance. And I can't take this off because my hair would scare everybody. So I'm keeping it under here. But again, wanna discuss some of the things that have been going on through our Growth and Planning meetings, some follow-ups. We had asked the committee some questions. We're gonna give you now the responses to those questions. And then again, talk about some of the things in regards to making our district safe and secure. So wanna welcome everybody here. Remember, this is for us to get information from you guys just as much as it is for us to give information. So please make sure you use the tools that we're gonna, and activities we'll have today, so we can gather more information. And we will go ahead and get started.
Thank you so much, Dr. Ball. For those of you that this is your first Growth and Planning meeting, welcome. We hope to see you again. My name is Nicole Taganoff, I'm the Chief Communications Officer for the district. And this is our agenda of the things that we'll be discussing this evening. After every meeting, I always like to give just a little summary of the meeting before. So if you did not make it, you will always be abreast of the things that are happening. We also have a website on our webpage. You can watch the recordings of the meetings. You can download all the meeting materials. And so if you are new, or if you missed our last meeting, all of those materials are there and available. So we'll go over last week's, last week's, last month's meeting. We will have a little presentation of the safety and security, the state of our district. And I have some really great and amazing people here to be able to share that information. Chief Ramon, sitting over here. We also have our Assistant Superintendent of Technology, Lacy Gosh. Will be sharing some information. And also our Chief of Staff, Dr. Kristen Saunders. And then of course, we are going to have an activity for you to participate in. If you attended any of our Listen and Learn meetings, you might be familiar with this activity of keep doing things, stop doing things, start doing things. And so while we share this information about the state of our district and the safety and security, we are going to participate, or you all will participate in that activity so that we can get more feedback about what the perceptions are from your standpoint as a community member, as a staff member, and also as a student. So, in our last meeting, we had some really rich discussions about our bond, the bond that did not pass this past time. And we talked about what are our steps moving forward. We are planning to bring to our board some different options about where this committee stands in support of when to push forward a new bond. So the activities comprised of three different options of when we could possibly call our next bond, and what is the committee's recommendation, what is the committee, where does the committee stand in support of when we would call these certain bonds? We talked about some different timelines. And then the groups got together and they talked about different pros and cons of these options to call for our next bond. Because even though our bond did not pass, there are still urgent needs in our district. And so we want to have the support of this committee. And then we also want to have, take those suggestions and that, the plan to the board so that they could advise what they would be in support of, so that we can move on to next steps. So our first option was to call for a bond election in November of 2022. So November 8th. November 8th, 2022 is coming up very quickly. And so you can see in your PowerPoint and also on this screen, we just summarized a few of the common comments of pros and cons in green. If we called for this bond, we would meet the needs of the district sooner. It would be a big election, there's a governor's race, so we would have more people showing up. We would be able to accommodate our growth sooner. And then we would also be able to hopefully lock in prices of those materials. Because as you know, everything is going up. Inflation, materials, everything is getting more expensive. So, those were the cons for November 8th. And then so, I'm sorry, pros for November 8th. And then the cons would be, it's a very short timeline. So I think about, we just started summer and it's already the middle of June. So there was a lot of concern and a lot of worry that there is not enough time to really communicate the message, what it is that we want. Also to communicate the ballot language. Remember in this past election, there was language on the ballot that spoke about it being a tax increase, even though we as a district were not increasing our tax rate. And so we want, there's a lot of just concern that there isn't enough time to do that. Inflation and costs are very high. It's a tight timeline. And then also, really close to the last bond failure. So those were some of the worries or concerns for a November 2022 election. That one got 21 votes from the committee. Option two would be to go to May, so May of 2023. Pros for this included things like more time to plan, of course. We talked a lot about the types of assessments that need to happen in order to create these intricate and detailed master plans. Those aren't quite complete yet, but if we wait until the May election, those assessments would be complete to really prioritize with the right kind of data. More time to get community support. And then also, there's a legislative session coming up. So there is a potential for legislative changes to be in our favor, maybe changing ballot language and such. And then of course, some concerns may typically allow voter turnout. We're waiting too long to address the urgent needs. And then the increase in costs of materials. That one also got 21 votes. And then option three would be to wait until November 2023. I'm sure as most of you can assume, the real concern is waiting too long. There are just some real urgent needs that, that we need to address. And so waiting would be a little bit too long. There was some concerns of low voter turnout. But people that were for this particular option, there were only five votes. More time to plan, learning from other districts. And then of course, again, the external assessments would be complete. So we did not have an opportunity to take this recommendation to the board to see which of those options they would go for. But we are going to take both option one, option two to them because those were the highest, highest votes from this particular committee and what they support. Any questions on that brief overview? Awesome. All right. So now we are gonna just give you a little state of the district address on safety and security. We do know and realize that is the top priority on everyone's mind, as it is ours. So I'm going to ask Ms. Lacy Gosh to speak for a moment. And then we'll have some other people that I spoke about earlier also share some information.
Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you for being here today. So we wanna talk about some of our, whoops, wrong direction. Some of our safety practices that we currently have in place. One of the things that we obviously want to know about has to do with our digital video surveillance. So we do have video cameras at all of our district sites, at all of the schools. There are video cameras on all of our school buses. Those are monitored, we do keep recordings of those. We can do playback and so on, so we do maintain those. We do have bullet resistant glass in some of our lobbies across the district, as well as access control, which access control is controlled by badge readers and whatnot to allow for, for access to the campus. So as you know, from this particular campus, this is one of the campuses that we are actually in the process of installing the access control on the main doors here. So we know there are a few sites that don't necessarily have them at present, but they are going in. So that is at most of our campuses across the district. We do use a background check system. So when people check into our campuses and come in, it does run a background check on them. It prints out a badge for them. And they are to wear that while they are on the campus. And that is a single point of entry for the visitors on each one of the campus sites. We also utilize a system called Gaggle. This is a system to help us monitor Judsonias D accounts. This includes our email accounts, chat accounts, files such as OneDrive files, Microsoft Word files, Google document files, and so on. It looks for instances of discussions of violence, discussions of abuse, discussions of cyberbullying, drug use, and other things. So that actually gets triggered. It is monitored 24/7. So if we don't have anybody on site, that is monitored by the company themselves. They have a list of individuals within the district to contact. Should they not get that person in order to reach that child or identify the appropriate individual to address the issue, calls go to our Chief of Police, calls go to the next individuals so that those issues can be addressed. So that is a strong line in terms of potential violence within the district. So we do monitor that electronically. We do offer, the Safe and Supportive Schools team is in place at all of our campuses. This is district level plans to implement our emergency operations plan. So each campus has an emergency operations plan, as well as each one, as well as the district as a whole. So we have campus committees that meet in order to help develop that and put that together each year. We also have put in some campus safety protocols, such as our single point of entry when you come into the campus. If you have a visitor, they have to have had the background check with the badge. When they leave the campus, that has to be turned back in. We also have other procedures for staff. Even though we have badges and we wear them on the campus sites, we still come in the building, sign in, make sure we know who's coming in and who's coming out from that single point of entry. So those are some of our existing safety practices that we have employed here in the district to date. I am going to turn this over to some specific campus safety protocols to Dr. Saunders.
See if I can do this without messing anything up. Nope. There we go. Hey, good, yes, yes.
All right, so I'm gonna answer the question as. I'll be happy to answer your question, ma'am. So we have already purchased. Her question has to do with this particular campus and the access controls on the front door of this campus. Okay, so we have installed. Yes, ma'am, I'll be happy to answer your question and I do have an answer for you. So in terms of the access control for this campus, yes, the front doors are the first priority. That is the front entrance of the building, which is our single point of entry for every single campus. There are other doors on the campus that access control is planned for, yes. There are other campuses as well that need additional units that are being planned for and have been purchased. I'm gonna repeat myself. They have all been purchased. I'll get, please, yes, ma'am, I understand. They have been purchased, we have scheduled with the company. Our problem is, we can get all of the wiring put in, we can get everything that we need to be put in. What we are unable to receive right now are the actual badge readers that go on the outside of the door. That is a nationwide shortage. We are working with the companies. In order to gain access to additional card readers, we simply are unable to get them shipped here. And there's absolutely nothing within our control as a district or as a technology department to get those here. Yes, ma'am, we have campuses that have been backordered for the last year based on supply shortages. What I can also say is I can't address anything that happened prior to me necessarily coming here. But I can say when some of these things were done in this district, costs were cut in order to do other things, and that was one of the areas that was. So, and I can't speak to the decisions that were made prior to our current administration and those of us that are here. What I can tell you is that we have set the dollars aside. We have gained permission to purchase those, we have purchased them. And as soon as the supply is here, we will absolutely be putting them in. But I can't put or install what we do not have. If I had a shipping date, I would tell you when the shipping date was. And I don't currently have the shipping date. You had a question, sir? Just a minute, he had a, he had a question. Oh.
I can repeat it, okay.
I'm a parent here at Hopkins. I'm also the PTO representative here. What, on this campus, I took parents and we secured doors. Now, I've heard that we're gonna go into next year with the same process without these doors. So am I as the PTO and as a parent, do I need to start getting my parents together again so we can secure our own doors here at the school?
A great question. My recommendation to the campus would be to put that into place right now simply because I cannot get a ship date on those door readers. Yes, sir, yes.
It's not a problem, but it becomes a problem because in reality, I'm a PTO representative, but I love my kids deaf. I've learned to love a lot of these kids on campus because of the PTO. But what I can't stand is, I have to stand or I have to get parents to do the job that this should have been done a long time ago. And it hurts. That's what, and I understand her hurt because her kids go to school with me. And you know, I know you, you've all talked about this before, but my thing is, we need a date.
Yes, sir, I would love to give you a date. I don't have a date for you. I, I can't get a date from the manufacturers. They have promised us dates and then they push it back, and they push it back. We've had this issue not just with these card readers. We've had the issue with laptops, we have the issue with the chips. We have the issue with a lot of things like that. And that is out of my control and I can't give you a specific date. All I can say is that we have some safety practices and protocols that we are putting into place to try to correct the issue. I am fully aware, having done the risk assessment this year in terms of where the issues are, and we are working on them.
But it's sad, yeah. The hallway that we're protecting and watching, it's mainly our pre-k's. They're the ones right there. And every day I got pre-k teachers coming to me, thanking me, wanna, wanna give us lunch. It's not their responsibility to do that. It's not even our responsibility to be on this campus to do that. I wanna bring a band's group on the campus, bring, on the campus with our community and band on campus. But we're directing everything towards a different direction on this campus. It's more safety than the other outlets that we should be more worried about. What can we do with our kids to make this a better campus? Not how can we secure our campus to make it better and everybody feel safe? If my pre-kers and my teachers don't feel safe, why are we even on this campus?
And your points are very well taken, sir. And I'm simply going to say, we understand the concern because we see these children as our children as well. And we are doing everything that we can from our side in order to come up with solutions and suggestions for how to bridge the gap.
We had an administration year, brought these folks for three and a half years. They were suspended away on safety, on education and everything else, and nobody gave a inch. These people are doing the perfect work.
This school is 16 years old. It should not have taken two years, three.
We can't get a bond back. You want votes, you want a bond back.
It's been 16 years old, and you're waiting for a break. So just your kids go here, you don't know.
Yes, I'll hold my comments and you can go first, okay.
Hi, Susan, I understand that you guys, you know, I've been here 28 years and I totally get it. But let me tell you something. Lacy Gosh. Hold on, hon. La, Ms. Gosh is correct. The, I have been here every day, I'm not on vacation yet, not until the 15th. But technology and what is it, the sister company name that is doing the key lists? They have been here every day wiring our school. This is a large school and they are here wiring. But they say, it's beyond our control when things are backordered. It's not her fault or anyone's fault. And I understand the date, I understand that, sweetie. But I also gotta tell you that Mr. Wood and Mr. Tobias have done their very best to block these two doors that we cannot lock for the safety of the children in and out of the building. Every door is locked. These two gentlemen have gotten a, a committee and they come to us and we had said, here, here you go, let's do it, let's work it. Then we locked it and they're there opening and closing, opening and closing for the whole day. Now, I came today to ask, maybe we could get a hall monitor to do those things, you know? But getting angry and frustrated, let's come together, we are a family here. We don't, don't blame her or anyone else. We are a family. You know, I'm sorry, but these are my kids too. And I know that this is very, very emotional. But we also want to be very honest with you. These things were ordered prior to the huge incident that happened. So it's not like we waited, we didn't wait. These things were ordered. I'm not trying to blame anybody else, but I haven't been here for 60 years. When we became aware of this situation, those things were immediately ordered. But because of COVID, we've been waiting for lots of things on backorder, on backorder. But what I can tell you is that that is not the only measure that we're gonna put in place. We are gonna be working with Ms. Combs to put other things in place until we get those things. The safety of our campus is extremely important. This is a priority campus to get that, it truly is. We will be getting it, it's first on the list. But I, I can't make the, the chips or the scanner thing, I can't make that myself. So I can't, I can't do that. I can't tell you February 1st because I'm not, I, I can't give you that information. But what I can tell you is, other things will be put in place. What I also have to be very honest and tell you, it might be a little inconvenient. But I'm hoping that people are willing to be inconvenient for the safety of your child. It might be, you have to walk a few more steps. You have to only use this certain door. It, it might be inconvenient, but it is important for us to keep our campuses safe.
Thank you, and I appreciate all of that on the screen. And I know, I'm at Wagner all the time. So I see everyone really watching out for these kids in the halls. So I appreciate all of that. And the, you know, the conversation we just had, which is, I think is important. But let's just look around right now, we're all in the cafeteria. So imagine 11:30, 500 kids in this cafeteria. Does someone really have to get in that door to make a difference, to cause some disasters? Are these, are these windows really gonna block what happened in Uvalde? It's not. So, so the badge readers, yes, we absolutely need them. But how are you gonna protect the kids when they're eating lunch? I'm just looking everywhere I see are windows.
It's not just the badge readers to keep somebody out. I'm not gonna bring up a situation, but that wasn't a front door used. And where our stress is, because we have discussed, a couple of us, because not only am I parent, I am an employee. So I do watch my Ps and Qs and I apologize for her rashness. But again, there's a third generation that's went through this school. Third generation to go through this school. I can see where their stress level is because my child is a fourth grader. My child will be one of those children that have to walk through an unsecured area. My child will be next year where a child, the door is unsecure if those badge readers don't show up. Now again, that still poses an issue. Do we arm these kids with badges? We are still gonna have issues here. But it's just where are we on the priorities? And I have been to a lot of these meetings. And I know this isn't normally the Q and A time. But all due respect, they didn't even know we didn't have badges until I called them out on it. They didn't even know we didn't even have it at the door. So that kinda offended me from the word go. After I was told that they came around to every school in this district. And they knew for a fact. And I was like, all due respect, no. But as you were saying, how do we protect these kids? We can't. I mean, let's be logical. I can walk up to that door and throw a brick in it, it's not gonna care about my badge reader. I agree. And that's where us as parents do need to teach our children. Where do you go in a case of crisis? And I promise you, my children know every hiding spot in this school better than anybody. Because I talk to my kids, and that's all we really can do. But our main concern is, what is the priority for this school? Are we first before Escondido gets an extra reader to cross a bridge? Are we the first on your list? You know, that's what it boils down to.
And we, you are the first. And immediately after that, thank you for being brave and contacting us and letting us know, those items were ordered after you mentioned them.
And I know that there's other security measures because I was over at Masters today. They got a computer that's designated to open the door.
And, and I think that's, you know, in all honesty, what she is saying is correct. You know, there is no perfect system, there's no perfect system. But we have to continue to work together to try to do everything possible. Because it's gonna take a lot of things. The, the badge readers alone are not gonna keep us safe. You know, teaching kids to hide, all those things, getting more police officers. There's not one perfect thing that can do it all, but we have.
I just think where she was offended was when we asked what the priority was, she kept going back to the shipping and saying, you are our first priority. You are the first one on the list as soon as we get those readers. And I think that's where the insult came in because those were. We should be first on the list.
And you are first, I give you my word, you are first. I give you my word, we are first, as soon as they come in, we'll get here. And myself, Lacy, none of my senior staff is perfect. But I can tell you that we don't want anything negative to happen on our watch. And, and the minute that we did find out, okay? That is when we started to put together the bond process is a long process, a, a long process. So we put that together, it didn't pass. So now we're putting together another idea. And as passionate as everybody feels right now, we're gonna need that passion when we go up to pass a bond again. Now, if y'all don't mind, let's continue with the presentation. Write down your questions because I don't want anybody to forget. So write them down, but, and I wanna hear from you guys, I promise you I do. But let's continue with the, with the presentation. We might get some questions answered, we might give you some information. But write them, write them, and so you don't forget. Write them so you don't forget. I'm sitting right over there, bring him to me and we're gonna try to continue to answer. So I'm sitting right in that corner, bring him to me. But let's just keep the process going. And I know it's emotional and we understand that. We're, we are not angry, we don't hold anything against anybody. We want to keep your child. We want to keep your child safe. I promise you that. So you're going to, okay, you're next.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. And Susan, thank you for the conversation, I appreciate it. So like Dr. Ball was saying, not every single plan that we have come up with is absolutely perfect, it's a process. These are pieces of these campus safety protocols. So when we talk about front doors being unlocked and things like that, right, these are the things that should be happening on campuses every single day. This is why this conversation is important because it is going to take all of us to make sure that this happens consistently every single day. It's going to take us being vigilant about checking campuses and making sure that doors are locked. It's going to take you as a community member, as a stakeholder, to hold people accountable in the building. It's like see something, say something, right? If we see that one of these things are not being taken care of, it is your responsibility to be obnoxiously loud about it and let administration know. It's going to, I'm going to be super honest with you guys, it's going to take a minute for us to get back to the vigilance we had after Sandy Hook. It's going to take a minute for us to get back to the vigilance we had after, name whatever historical event you want, it's going to take us a minute. The point is, we've got to get there and not let up. That's exactly the issue. We've got to get there and not let up. So let's talk about these for just a second. The very first one says, all Judson employees must wear their badge at all times. This is incredibly important, pre-K3, all the way up to seniors in high school, right? There have been times when I have walked on a campus and I cannot tell the difference between a senior in high school and the actual teacher. It is incredibly important that badges are worn at all times. Now, at the elementary level, those students do not have badges, so at that point, we're talking about the adults in the building, right? All Judson ISD employees. That means if you're coming into the campus to service the AC, you have a badge on. We can immediately identify who you are and why you're there. The next one says, visitors will not leave the secure area, and Lacy talked about this earlier, without signing in and receiving a visitor badge. So that's where they have to turn in their driver's license, it goes through the Raptor system or a background check system. It prints out an ID sticker for them that has their photograph on there, and when they are walking through the building, that shows I've been to the front office, I've already run through the security check, I'm good to go. And then you turn in that badge and receive your driver's license back when you leave campus. So I turn in my driver's license, I get a badge. When I'm ready to go, I turn in my badge, I get my driver's license back. Yes, sir?
Aren't you, based off of our license, you're not being.
Correct. So remember, we just got done talking about like not all of these processes are 100% correct, and we have to get back to the point where we are vigilant, right? So from now on, when your ID is run through there, they hold on to your ID. Absolutely, details, right? Because then what happens if you leave campus and you still have that badge on? Absolutely, but the more important thing is you can come back into the building tomorrow because it looks like you have already gone through security. So if we, for lack of a better word, hold your ID hostage, you have to come turn in your badge in order to get your ID back. Hey, thank you, I appreciate that. Thank you. Yes. So I can't tell you when it stopped, but it's just like we got done saying, right? It's like we get lax. We get used to these things and then pieces fall off, or a new person comes into that position that was not trained in the protocols, and then before you know it, one thing after another has fallen off. All staff, I'm sorry, all exterior and interior classroom doors are to remain locked at all times.
Is there a question about the ID?
Yes, sir.
But a lot of these, I mean, there are ID, there are ID, so I guess this would be a question to see how deep into it do you want to get with that when I have someone who picked their cell, it's obviously them, but there, you know, if I, what do you?
Here you go, here you go.
So on that situation, it's happened many a times, all I tell is the principle is pick your battles. It may say that it's an expired DL, but it's still going to run through the Raptor system. Oh, his question was if the driver's license is expired or the ID. So what we usually tell the principal is, look, let them know that their driver's license or ID is expired, just so that you've informed them, run it through the system, it's still going to run through the Raptor system, and it's still going to give you a print. Even if they come up as a sex offender, they should know better because they have to be registered and they have to have a current ID or driver's license. But if it's expired, you, the administrator or the campus officer can tell them nicely that their driver's license or ID is expired. The same thing with the government issued license, I know military folks do not like to give that card, and they come in and they swipe that card sometimes, it's a form of ID. So that's why some of the protocols dropped because a lot of administrators were having issues with military and federal IDs, they did not want to give up that ID. So we may want to put something in place for that government ID.
So I was just thinking about what you said, Dan. I would, me personally, I would probably be a little bit of a jerk about it, and I'd be like, well, since your ID's expired, there's really no reason for you to come back and turn in your badge because your ID's expired, so I will take your car keys. You can have your car keys on the way out and when you turn in the badge. Cell phone, yep, all of that would work, yeah. Okay, next one. All exterior and interior classroom doors are to remain locked at all times. So this is the piece that we have had lots of conversations with teachers about, because I'm going to be super honest with you guys, it's a hassle. You have kids going to the restroom, you have kids going to the nurse, you have kids going up to the front office, and every single time a kid is coming back to your classroom, you're having to unlock the door, right? It may not seem feasible, but it's what we need to do. So I'm going to repeat that to you one more time. It may not seem feasible, you may be sitting there saying, that sounds like a nightmare, but it's what we need to do. So classroom doors are to remain locked at all times. And when we met with the summer school principals and teachers, we went over all of these pieces and we said, like, if you guys notice some of these that are just overtly obnoxious and they're taking away from learning time, we're having a really hard time with it, let's have this conversation before we start back in August, right? So there are pieces to it that we're getting feedback to see, do we need to adjust this? But as of right now, all exterior and all interior doors are to remain locked at all times. Next one, all staff members must be visible and remain vigilant during school hours, especially during transition periods such as arrival, dismissal, and passing periods. When we talked with summer school principals, we also talked about that recess time, right? Like you have got to have your head on a swivel. You need to be looking at your surroundings at all times. You've got to be out in the hallway monitoring, you've got to be standing at the front door looking at who's coming into the building, same thing with dismissal. We have to be vigilant at all times. Yes, ma'am?
I have a super, I don't have a super, we have that, um, the, along the, you know, the, 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 the,[1204.58]
B and C because we might not make it perfect right away without the bond. Okay, so that's why we know that we have to have a Plan B and C such as keys, student. Yeah, student, you know, passes. So we, we know that we have to come up with different plans in order to achieve this. I hope that kind of helps Dean. Okay, sorry.
And to kind of further answer your question, we do have one summer school campus at an elementary school, Olympia, yes. So you guys are running sort of a model for the way it would work. And that is exactly what Dr. Ball said. When a grade level goes out for recess, they take a radio and a key. So the door remains locked at all times and that key travels with the radio. But of course, when you are a teacher employed at Olympia, that would look a little bit different because you have your own set of keys. But we're kind of piloting at your campus right now. Absolutely. Okay. Well, you're the superintendent, so I think the answer is yes.
I really meant two things, sorry. So we're on your team. So when our system isn't working, whether you're a teacher or a parent, send us an email because sometimes we're not doing it to be noncompliant or to be divisive or anything like that. It's just sometimes we don't know. We might miss it. So we want you to tell us. So another thing that usually the back gates in most schools, they stay open because we have cafeteria deliveries happening, happening on a regular basis. So now we're contacting those individuals, those vendors and saying, our gate's going to be closed. So you're going to have to call the cafeteria and say, I'm coming to, you know, deliver the milk or whatever the case may be. Then somebody has to go out there and open it. But it's just going to take a little bit of time and people to get used to it. And then also that inconvenience for that staff member that is going to have to go outside and open it. But that inconvenience is going to be worth it. Yes. Okay, you tell me the question and I'll.
So like at Three Meadows, I teach out in the attic.
Yes.
And we have kids that go to dyslexia, kids that go here, and kids that go there. And they have to go back and forth until those exterior doors are open.
Right. But they're not going to be next year. So that's why.
How are we going to get kids back?
Right. And that's why we're saying we're developing a Plan B and C to say, we give teach, we give keys, we get students some of these. So we're in the process of, of developing some plans. I know, I know. But we got to try something. Yes, ma'am.
So the gates, like, for instance, here, the gates center in the back, we have been told we're in here because they, they will not lock, but they do for.
No, she was talking about locking this door.
We have a back gate back here.
Well, we'll go, can we go check it out after this meeting so you can tell me? So I want to be positive.
Access to cafeteria in the back.
Okay. We, can we just check it out if you don't mind? Okay. Don't leave until we check it out. Okay.
That's all right. No, that's all right. Okay. So next one, all exterior and interior classroom doors are to be checked hourly. So we talked just a few minutes ago about all the exterior, interior doors being locked. This is that safeguard, right? So now they're checked hourly. Whatever that looks like on your campus. It may be you have a rotating schedule with the custodian, the assistant principals, the principal, the campus secretary, whatever that looks like. But you are checking doors hourly. Next one is access control must not be bypassed. So that's what Lacy was talking about earlier where you can take your badge and you can scan it at one of those little black boxes and it will open the front door. So sometimes what happens is during arrival or dismissal, you will take a doorstop or a cone and you will prop that door open so that kids can move in and out of the buildings quickly. I'm not even going to say safely because it's not safe, but quickly. So then the idea behind that is if there's an access control panel, that is not to be bypassed, which goes along with the one down at the very bottom. Oh, just joking. I'll go to it in just a second. All exterior gates must remain locked at all times. One of the examples we gave is when one of the custodians leaves the cafeteria and is going to the dumpster. A lot of times what will happen is I'm only going to be at the dumpster for two minutes, so I'm going to leave the gate open. So now what that looks like is you unlock the gate, you step outside the gate, you lock it back, you empty the trash, you come back to the gate, you open it, and you go inside. Very last one says the safety, I'm sorry, the safe and supportive teams will meet every four weeks to debrief safety, safety protocols and concerns. So a lot like what we're doing right now, right? So coming to the table and saying, this is not working. I need some help problem solving this. We need another way to do this. It's these conversations that need to happen on campuses every four weeks because as we've pointed out, every campus is different. Every campus has their own set of challenges. So it's coming to the table and making sure that we are all on the same page. Questions? Yes, ma'am. Ms. Dr. Johnson? Yes, yes. And there can be a community member on that team at the campus level. Think of it a lot like Sitebase. She said can, or do those meetings happen on the campus? I said, yes, and you can have a community member on that team. Think of it very similar to Sitebase, but their only focus is safety. Site, Sitebase Decision Making Committee? Yep, yep, absolutely. Yes, ma'am.
So like all the, like the custodians and food workers, they're going to be briefed as well in regards to all.
So the.
That's the number one I want to ask. That's what I always think, like, it only took one door open for the overall team. So every time there's a custodian or a food worker, there's just one door open and because it's, you know, the trash or like the food or whatever.
Deliveries.
Yeah, the deliveries. But no one there, like, watching over, you know, for the worker outside. So that's remain like open for how long? So if they're, I was just going to ask if they're going to be briefed also, like, like what you said about closing the gate and then, I know it's like a hassle for them, but it's kind of like the safety.
Yeah, absolutely. So the question was, is child nutrition and the custodial staff briefed on these procedures and protocols? And the answer is absolutely yes. Yes, ma'am. And then I'm going to come right back to you. Thank you for saying that. So she said she's a child nutrition worker at Wagner High School and they understand the safety protocols and they do not break them. They understand that they are not to open the door for anyone and they are not to leave the gates open.
I know at Judson High School, we have a big issue with our cameras. As parents, we all thought they worked and they don't. Because I know for a fact that you brought out to us all that, sorry, cameras don't work. Okay. When are those going to get fixed?
Yes, ma'am.
Those, those are. Some of the things that we need a bond for. So those, I can't give you a timeline right now on those because that is some extensive work that we do need a bond for. Yes, sir. No, no, sir.
I understand this. You have officers at the high schools, officers at the middle schools, but you have the rest of them patrolling the elementary. That I don't understand. We have Converse patrolling streets, Kirby, San Antonio, Selma. Everybody has their own patrol force. Why would we be patrolling streets that already patrol rather than having those officers at a campus?
I'm going to have to refer that question to our chief of police. Hi, Mr. Harris. It is part of my, my program here. I can tell you, let me, who's got the clicker? Okay, you got it. Okay. So we do have 27 fully commissioned officers right now, including myself. So we have two officers at each high school, one at each middle school. We have an elementary support program that is specifically assigned, the four officers are specifically assigned anywhere from five to six schools. I wish I had more, but we don't. We're only at 27. So you figure your high school, your middle schools. I got one working the night shift. I got two working B shift between 2:00 to 10:00 p.m. And that's to help out the athletics department, campus events, and plus the events that are going on on our campus. So that gives us 27. We are all working around the clock. We put Band-Aids on things sometime, but we make things work and we make sure that we provide a safe and secure environment. Okay. And we will look at it. The elementary cluster, like I said, it's one officer for every four to five schools. Okay. We have direct communication with seven entities, SAPD, Bear County, Kirby, Converse, Live Oak, Universal, Universal City, and Selma. We're also assigned to the Southwest Texas Fusion Center. We work with SAPD. We coincide with them till they let us know. It's a sharing information database where we get any threats on social media outside of the school district. We are the first to know so that we can start working with our administrators and investigate the situation or the threat. We also have digital video camera systems that we work with transportation and our school district. We always monitor those at our dispatch center. We have a gaggle system earlier that Ms. Dr. Saunders talked about and so did Lacy. This gaggle system allows us when there may be a possible suicide or a threat when students are utilizing our Chromebooks. We make calls at 3:00 in the morning, 2:00 in the morning just to make sure that our students are safe. We use the Raptor system. We conduct patrol buys through our facilities to make sure that our employees are also safe. In 2003, we had a JISD Safeline. If you don't know this number, I'll be more than happy to give it to you. You can report anything, like when you say you see something, hear something, say something. It's area code 210, 410, 1953. That is 24/7, any day of the week. Just a while ago, some of you received our emergency pamphlet in English and in Spanish. And we also provided some of you with our gun locks through ChildSafe. I only bought a box full and I was happy that a lot of you asked for one. So I will bring those back at the next meeting. And of course, there's no cost to the, the ChildSafe lock. One of the questions that was asked was, are we equipped? And yes, we are. We have rifles. We have armor. We have shields. We have breaching tools. We train as much as we can, not so much during the school year because our priority is here at Judson ISD, making sure that we provide a safe and secure environment during the day. So majority of our trainees is in the summer. We also have a safety and security audit team. We go to each school. Some of us dress down. We walk through the buildings to make sure that we're going to be stopped because we don't have the ID on. We don't have a badge and a gun on. And we walk to see if our teachers stop us. A majority of the time they do. And you'll be surprised, even our students kind of give us a second look because they don't know who we are, because they don't see that visitor's badge. Every Judson campus and department should have already established an emergency operations plan. We get those, we file them, we look through them to make sure that they're complete. Each emergency operations plan has an evacuation route. It should have a Plan A, should have a Plan B and a Plan C. Just because in case the first plan doesn't work. We practice during the year. Now by law, we have to notify the community if we have a lockdown drill. Fire drills once a month, shelter in place, hazmat, weather, you name it, we practice it. And every administrator documents the drill and then they send it to our department and then we file it away. We have a full-time safety officer, Corporal Sendez. He does a lot of the drills, a lot of the audits with us. He goes and teaches a couple of classes. We also train our students interacting with police officers when they get their license. Every high school student does have to take that course before they graduate and it does go on their transcript. We also have this civilian response active shooter training, which is craze. And guess what? Something new? We've just been informed, there is a training for parents. So when you're sitting at an event and something goes down, unfortunately, we are going to train you on what you should do, how you should act. And we're going to try to implement that this year. So it'll be coming to a school near you. We just hope that we get to have you come in and participate. One of the things I wanted to talk about real quick is Ms. Hernandez, who's a secretary here at Hopkins, called me the other day and we sat down. She says, Chief, what do I do? My doors are not secured. I said, okay, let's make a plan. Thank God for PTO because they put a plan in place right away. So for those elementary folks that are here and you're part of PTO, think outside the box. It's going to be an inconvenience like Dr. Ball said for a little bit until we can get all these safety measures in place. But their PTO has stood here for two weeks and secured those doors to make sure everybody was following protocol. So my hat's off to Hopkins for doing that. Well done. Everybody came together. We have memorandums of understanding with Converse, Kirby, UC, San Antonio, Bear County, and we all agree that if we're needed, if we need them, they're going to come. The cavalry's going to come. They also help us with training and any type of emergency response assistance. We work closely with our mental health, Ms. Monica Garcia and her staff. And it's an excellent program that Judson ISD has implemented. There was one more thing I wanted to tell you guys. Yes, ma'am. So we have four that are committed to 20 elementary schools. We need to reevaluate our organizational chart and I've spoken to Dr. Ball about that. I wish I had an officer for every elementary campus. But again, it's, that's 20 officers. Everybody across the nation is hurting for officers. So even if I put four officers on a campus, what about my other schools? Because there's no guns. Yeah. Yes, ma'am.
PKSN, they have a dedicated officer at all times at the building. Now, it does cost a lot. They pay roughly $80,000 a year for that officer. But he is a, or she, is an off-duty cop from our local PD. Have we looked into our local cops, the higher cops, coming back and working for a different agency by coming in here?
So majority, the question was, Dr. Ball, was have we looked into out resourcing the outside agencies to come work in our schools? And the problem with that is that you can never put a dollar on anybody's head. So right now, I'll give you an example. The going rate right now for an off-duty officer is about $60 an hour. SAPD is $99 an hour. You times that by five, daily rate. If we were to get an officer for every elementary school, it would probably cost us about $1.2 million with benefits. But again, that's probably over my, my head. But I wish we had it. But unfortunately, we can do everything we possibly can and put all security measures in place. And God forbid that the unthinkable ever happens. But that's why we need the community. We need administrators. It's just not one person's responsibility, folks. It's everybody's responsibility. Not just one.
My school, where I work, I didn't see you. So that's what I'm saying. When we have an event, we know we got a high traffic. All of you, why are we not reaching out?
Because the administrator needs to contact me and say, Chief, we have an event tonight.
So we're asking Dr. Ball, how are you going to create a plan? So my principal doesn't have to call you every time. We said that we were going to hear, these are our events. These are when we're going to need officers. And you figure out the plan, just call immediately two weeks prior to it. Right?
Right. So.
Sorry, you're just out of luck. Man, that's the 55,000.
Right. So I, I want to make this very clear. Okay. I, I am getting the impression that some people are thinking that this is about money. This isn't about money. Okay? This isn't about money because I don't want to send the message that this is, that, that we have an endless supply. Don't want to send that message. But I also don't want to send the message that this is just about money. We have to look at the entire big picture of what is needed for our schools to be successful. So there's a lot more that goes into it. I have asked the board to give my team, till the month of June, to come back and give them a proposal of what we need and how to best address this. If people are thinking that just by hiring more police officers, that isn't the entire solution to everything. So I need to look and see every single component of it in order to really do the right thing for our staff and for our parents. And I know you've waited for a long time, so I'm going to hand it to you.
Thank you, Dr. Ball. I'm Kate Wood. I work at Wagner High School. I've been there for seven years. I'm going into my eighth year. So I'm hearing a lot of, kind of questions about more officers and more police at campuses. But I'm not hearing a lot of conversation about our social workers and adding to that staff. Because at Wagner High School, we only have Ms. Morales. And if you know Ms. Morales, she works all the time. She cares desperately about these kids. And this system that's in place, the gaggle, is great. But we need more people working on this. We cannot burn out our one social worker for 2,400 students. If she goes, who follows her? Yes, there is a shortage on police officers. There's a shortage on social workers. There's a shortage on teachers. There's a shortage on substitutes. We have a shortage because frankly, we, I mean, it's hard. It's hard. I worked summer school today at Kirby and I was going over the protocols with the students and I said, you know, see something, say something. And they snickered. And that's a community issue. That's a community issue because I guarantee you, every single teacher, every single adults in that building has been teaching them that. And we say that with a passion because we have worked through the Parklands, we have worked through the Santa Fe, Mex, uh, Santa Fe, Texas. We have worked through the Uvalde's. And what happens is immediately after, immediately after, we get a huge rush from the community about these are all the ways that we are failing and we need to be doing all of this. But we're not getting the call for the support that can make the huge difference, like having social workers who can help support, like having three, five Ms. Morales's for Wagner High School. Our counselors really are only limited to schedule support and academic support. They do not have the resources for emotional support. And these students are coming out the other side of a pandemic and they are dealing with mass trauma. We're all dealing with trauma. We're all carrying it. But these kids don't have a way to express it. Their brains are not developed. So, sorry, I'm shaking and I'm, I'm passionate because I care. I care so much about these children. And this is the second big one since I've started here. And I was in middle school when Columbine happened. And I begged my mom not to send me to middle school because I was afraid those kids are going to shoot it up. And now my mom has to tell me, Kate, if it happens at your school, don't jump in front. Because we all know every educator in here would put themselves in the line. We got to have more counselors. We've got to have more support and we need the community. We need parents to be serious. If I hear you snicker about see something, say something, like, we're going to have a talk. Like, it's got to be important.
I think about security, how we're supposed to be all responsible enough. Where, where do we, we don't have to come here. I don't do it.
Right. Right. But.
Right.
I'm starting school. Why do we all feel accountable for our kids? I, I understand that. You know, I see that. There's a lot of people who are frustrated. I see that in our, our admin, our company, from the beginning. We understand that. But as, as we hold our kids accountable for stuff, they're not going to pull, as parents have been holding y'all accountable for having, if A is not in play, then you need a Plan B. And you need to be able to talk up there and understand that those persons are going to help you. And you need to understand that the Plan B has to be in play.
I.
You can't just say, oh, they're not ordered, or they have anything like that. Well, if it hasn't been, then you need a Plan B. That Plan B doesn't succeed. And you said that afterwards. But I understand we're frustrating a lot of these parents. This is my first one.
Right.
And like I told Dr. Sanders, she told me, if I didn't have to come to school, that means everything is good. And I have. And I did one time and I did what I had to do.
Right.
I've never been to one of these meetings. But guys, it comes, it, it comes from us at home first, teaching our kids to be responsible, respectful, loving, abide city rules once they leave. But we also have a whole y'all accountable too because they're with y'all for eight hours.
Right.
They take eight hours. You know, and I know what the officer said. The officer said, oh, we only got four. Well, make sure you leave a fifth one. Am I right? I mean, I wish I could have gone, but I'm also seeing parents that have to work too. Believe me.
Right.
I wanted to do these things because y'all died in there. But when I know that it's a different relationship, I want to know.
Right. And, and remember, it's not that I wanted to say it after the fact. We've, we have been discussing this. We will come back to this committee or another committee and tell you our Plan B and C. We will. I need for us to move forward. We are going to move forward with our activity because we do take this information and we do read it. We use it just like we gave everybody the counts and the numbers. We do that. And I need some information because I have a board meeting that's coming up and I'm going to take these sheets and I'm going to ask you to do something. And that's my data to say, not everybody shows up. But we offered this meeting. From this meeting, this is what the community is telling me. So we have a sheet up here, right there, right there. So I need for y'all to break up into groups and don't let, there's only like two people here. So somebody else might want to join here. Somebody else might want to join here. At the end, I will stay here as long as you want to talk to me. But I need to move forward with this data. So what you should be doing right now is telling me, hey, Dr. Ball, make sure you keep this. Dr. Ball, stop doing this. And what we are talking about right now is safety and security. So tell me what you want me to keep doing, what you want me to stop, and what you want me to start. And then afterwards, I will stay here and you can share with me as much as you would like. But if y'all could break up and join some groups so I can get as much information from the different groups.
All the posters are up front.
There's a poster here. There's another poster here, some here. So everybody, please join a group. So everybody, please join a group. You.
Every kid on this campus has to say.
We are talking about the safety of this school.
Everyone's mind.
That's why I question you.
See, fighting was, anytime you go, 1-9-5-5, ABC, everything.
Oh, here, 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 here.
Dr. Ball, maybe Dr. Ball would like to walk around with it. Running the sound. He wants to, you know, it's a live, he wants to walk around.
Anyway, does that, if we do like a kind of grassroots, kind of like, uh, you know.
So I take your after-hours call. My, uh.
It's another.
Yes. For what you keep.
Yes, sure.
One point entries?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so, but our. Parents who've lost a last fall in the past. And I'm still waiting. That's before destiny even got there. So.
Yeah, so it's not, and that's my point. It's not inconvenient. It is a sacrifice for our children. And I.
And then I have access. All the doors are on the west. Are on all doors.
It could excuse that, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
He goes on the phone, on the black phone.
This is actually a good school. Good parents, a good team.
That's the.
I'm hearing some great ideas as I walked around. I'm going to give you five more minutes. Please put them down. Please put them down. There's nothing too crazy, nothing too drastic. Please share the ideas. And I'm going to collect these in about five minutes.
Did y'all get to write down some ideas?
Yes, and then we got started talking.
That's fine, that's fine. Just make sure. Did y'all get to write some ideas? Perfect. Perfect. I feel like I'm so smelly, it's embarrassing. Did y'all get to write down ideas?
Yes, ma'am.
Possible, possible. Did y'all get to write down some ideas?
Yes, ma'am.
You did. Contact you, and then we'll make, we'll make class.
All right, ma'am.
Dr. Ball?
Yes.
Sorry, I have a question. John, how do I get on campus in two weeks, though? There won't be anybody there. But I can look.
Yeah, you can get away to town, right?
Yeah. Yeah, if I look out front door. Did y'all get to write some ideas?
Yes.
Okay, so what we are going to do is we are going to collect those, okay? So before you leave, if you could put them right here, okay? And since we will be having more meetings, but I know everybody wants us to share this. And make sure you have our email, your email. And we will share the composite of what all of these have said. We'll post it, yes, we will post it. So we'll take all of this, compile it together, and then post it. This does conclude the meeting. I am going to stay here. Mr. Atkins is in the back. He'll take any suggestions. Mr. Guidry will take suggestions. These are for my, these are my senior staff members. Ms. Gosh also, and Dr. Taganoff and Dr. Saunders. You can give us any suggestions, but truly thank you. Thank you for coming. This is something we take seriously and we want to do right by you and your kids. So thank y'all very much. And we will send out the future dates and send out all of this information. But I'm here to whatever time, if y'all want to come talk to me.